Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the December 14th, 2023 Monthly Meeting of the Henrico County School Board. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of our agenda. Board members, may I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda's been approved. Madam Superintendent, the next items are from you.
Thank you, Chair Kinsella. Members of the board, good evening, and to all of our visitors, welcome and good evening as well. We will begin our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence. And we're so pleased to have students with us to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And Dr. Shania Tolliver, principal from Longdale Elementary School, has joined them and will come up to the podium and introduce our students, who will be leading us in the pledge. Once she's done that, we'll stand for the pledge. So I'll have her come forth and introduce the students.
Good evening. Good evening, families, and good evening, all our visitors. So I would like to introduce some of our SCA members here today that are going to do the pledge. So we have Marcus Roscoe, we have Audrey Brown, Olivia Pierce, and Isabella Hill.
Everyone, now please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'd please pause for a moment of silence. And that concludes our moment of silence. How about a round of applause for our students? Well done. And the next item is our musical highlight. So we're going to make our way to the audience, so we can enjoy the Longdale Elementary Music Students, who are under the direction of Stacy Moore, who will perform for us this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I am the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. And it is my pleasure to introduce tonight for our performance highlight, the Longdale Elementary Fifth Grade Course, "The Tiger Tones," under the direction of Mrs. Stacy Moore. The students wanted to share that they are really hoping for some snow. They will be singing "Snow, Snow, Snow" and "Rock and Roll Snowman." Both songs are written by Teresa Jennings. We know from our past experiences that these snow-based performances usually help us get our wishes granted. So cross your fingers. All right. You just met their principal, but we want you to stand and be recognized, Dr. Shania Tolliver, doing double duty tonight. All right. And here are our Tiger Tones.
Oh. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Oh. Look outside and what do I see? Clouds in gray sky looking at me. Oh. Snow, snow, snow. Oh. There's no sex and running away. It's gonna snow all night and all day. Oh. Snow, snow, snow. Oh. Snowy blanket swaddling white, feeling kind of cozy tonight. Inside by the firelight, winter here we go. Oh. Come tomorrow we're gonna play, two feet deep and warm and wet. We don't mind it anyway. Come on, let it snow. Oh. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Oh. Watch the place come tumbling down, solid little place not waiting to stop. Oh. Snow, snow, snow. Oh. Getting taller and heavy and deep, just what I need more traffic to sleep. Oh. Snow, snow, snow. Oh. Snowy blanket swaddling white, feeling kind of cozy tonight. Inside by the firelight, winter here we go. Oh. Come tomorrow we're gonna play, two feet deep and warm and wet. We don't mind it anyway. Come on, let it snow. Oh. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Oh. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Snow. (Applause) Have you heard about the rock and roll snowman? Snow, whoa, whoa, whoa. Do you wanna hear the rock and roll snowman? Snow, whoa, whoa, whoa. Do you wanna hear the rock and roll snowman? Snow, whoa, whoa, whoa. He's always rocking in the snow and everyone says, "Go man, go." Do you wanna hear the rock and roll snowman? Snow, whoa, whoa, whoa. Go man, go. Go man, go. Snow, snow, snow. Snow, snow, snow. Go man, go. Have you heard about the rock and roll snowman? Snow, whoa, whoa, whoa. Have you heard about the rock and roll snowman? Snow, whoa, whoa, whoa. He loves to play his snow guitar. He wants to be a snowman star. Have you heard about the rock and roll snowman? Snow, whoa, whoa, whoa. Have you heard about the rock and roll snowman? Snow, whoa, whoa, whoa. Go man, go.
Well done. What an outstanding performance from our students from Longdale with the surprise Rock and Roll Snowman appearance. Outstanding. We were honored to be able to hear your snow and snowman songs this evening. Our next item this evening is our recognition item. And this evening, we are so proud to honor the leadership of two of our school board members who are retiring after nearly a decade of dedicated service. This is the last school board meeting for Fairfield Representative Roscoe Cooper and Three Chopped Representative Mickey Ogborne. Their time on the board was extraordinary, including new school openings, renovations, the creation of innovative programs, a little thing called COVID, hundreds of school visits to spend time with our incredible students, teachers, and staff. Now, I'd like you to take a look at some highlights.
We want to leave future generations a Henrico school division that is even better than the one we enjoy today.
The most important thing is about our students, it's about our families, and about our staff.
I like having new teachers and staff members each year. It gives us old timers a fresh look at education.
You all are history makers as well. You have greatness in you, and we expect great things from you.
(Inaudible)
Every morning I pray, I'm preaching.
Thank you so much for all you do.
Once you become part of the Henrico family, you will see that we all do work together.
And I'm truly excited that we have decided to engage and to involve our members from every one of our schools.
So graduates, as you move forward, I challenge you to dream big.
And we challenge you to know that this is not your end, but this is a new beginning.
I wish you all the best as you embark on the journey to come.
The one thing we can be grateful for, that you didn't drop out, you didn't flunk out, you weren't kicked out, you didn't give out, but you made it here today.
That's awesome. So go ahead.
Because when one chapter ends, another chapter begins.
No matter where life leads you, I wish you all the best. Now, I'd like to invite Reverend Cooper and Mrs. Ogborne up to the front of the dais, where the chair and vice chair will present them with a small token of appreciation. And while they do that, I want to share a bit about their service to the Henrico Schools community. Mrs. Ogborne joined the school board in 2014. She also served as chair and vice chair during her time on the board. She was actually the chair of the school board that hired me as superintendent. When asked what makes her the proudest about her time on the board, Mrs. Ogborne said, quote, "Of course, the last nine years, we have faced unprecedented challenges. And I'm not just referring to the pandemic, but we also helped pass two bond referenda, which led to major school renovation projects. And despite the challenges, I've been able to work with some great people to keep us focused on the big picture and kids. At the end of the day, what I'm most proud of and grateful for are those relationships that I've developed and have allowed me to get work done. I can leave confident that I was able to play a part in making a positive and lasting impact." Although her name is Mickey, she is no mouse. She is a fierce, and I do mean fierce, advocate for students and employees. Ms. Ogborne, we appreciate your years of dedication and service. Reverend Roscoe Cooper. He's also retiring from the school board, but he isn't going far. In January, he will join the Henrico County Board of Supervisors. He is wrapping up his second term on the school board. He was first elected in 2015 and served both the vice chair and the chair roles during his tenure. He tells us he's grateful for the relationships he's developed in service to the students, families, and staff in the Fairfield District. And he is proud of the expanded access that students have to rigorous learning opportunities. Reverend Cooper is always quick to point out that when we say we are committed to our students, we mean all students. And he promises to remember the needs of our school community as he makes decisions on the Board of Supervisors. Reverend Cooper and Mrs. Ogborne, the ripple effects of your work will never be measured adequately. With all that you have helped put into motion, your impact is simply too far-reaching. Tonight, we want to thank you for your service, your care, and all that you have done for the children of Henrico County. Congratulations on your retirement from the school board, and best wishes for your future endeavors. (Applause)
Well, we agreed that we were going to be quick. But I will tell you, in the last nine years, I reflect on, you know, beginnings and endings. And I remembered a beginning. It'll make, it'll kind of make me laugh and get past where I feel right now. The first time I went out door-knocking, which all of us that have ever run for public office can relate to. I went by myself, which my husband told me, "Don't ever go by yourself." But I did it because I thought, you know, I want to do this. I haven't done it before. I'm nervous. I'll try. So I picked a street that was a little cul-de-sac. I went out there, and nobody was home. And I saw this lady walking down the street, walking her dog. And I walked up to her and introduced myself, and we had a nice conversation. And she turned around, and she walked down the street, and she turned down a driveway, and right on the mailbox was the name Kenlaw. And I realized I had been talking to the superintendent at the time, his wife. It was my first person I talked to door-knocking. She never told me who she was. She never said anything. And I'm like, years later, when I saw her again, I said, "Did you ever tell Dr. Kenlaw that I was the, you were the first person I was door-knocking with?" And she said, "No, I didn't want him to know what he was getting into." And I just, I just had to laugh. And I think back to the beginning, when I was green, I was new, I was a teacher. I never dreamed that nine years later, I would be standing here doing this. But, you know, I, I think there is just a thing, when you feel like you've done something that you can be proud of, you can give back, you can give of yourself. But I really think about the people of the Three Chopped District who gave me a chance and who put their faith and trust in me for nine years, and I am so grateful for that. Because if you don't have their support, we can't do what we do. And so I look back at that, and if they ever knew that the first person I talked to was the superintendent's wife, and it was just one of those funny little things that you think back when you campaign, and, and the stuff that you go through when you try to get this job, but then you try to keep it. So for nine years, the constituents and the people have had their faith and trust in us, which means so much. And, but then, to be able to work with all of you has been truly a gift, which I am very grateful for. And I'm grateful to have my husband and my wonderful granddaughter here tonight. But I better say, you go ahead.
Well, I'm trying not to cry, so Mickey's shedding her tears off. So I want to say thank you to the staff, to my peers, our peers on the board. We're so grateful for the time spent. I don't know what to say. It's been eight years, and they go by very quickly. And Mickey came on a year before I did, and so she was instrumental in kind of teaching me the ropes and, and, you know, giving me direction and guidance. And so I'm eternally grateful for her. The last board, her and David allowed us to come to their house for dinner. And so, and we actually got to go in the kitchen, right? So we all know that it's, the kitchen is that intimate place where, you know, you invite people that mean something to you. So we were able to be around their kitchen table. And so it became a family. And so, you know, this chapter ends with another one's beginning. We're excited about the future. I was talking to my predecessor, Ryan Young, a few minutes ago, and the hour was quickly approaching, 6:30. And I said to him, I turned to him and says, "Let me go to my seat." He said, "Yeah, because it's the last time." And so I said, "He said, 'Last time, man. Is it for you.'" He's right. But I'm leaving in good hands. I'm excited about the future. So thank you all for this wonderful, momentous token, and I can't wait to have a copy of that video as well. So thank you all.
That killed me. Thank you. Here.
Wow. Well, the only way we can, we can't even top that. But I'll tell you what, something that I've been looking forward to is hearing Reverend Cooper speak some more. So if you would please read our mission statement one last time for us, Reverend Cooper.
Madam Chair, I would be honored. Henrico County Public Schools' Mission Statement. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you so much for that. The next item on our agenda this evening is the public forum. This is the time when citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and will be given three minutes to address the school board. Speakers will be called to speak in the order in which they signed up, and may not relinquish their spot to anyone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone, clearly state your name and your school affiliation, if applicable. After stating your name, please place your number you were given in the car near the podium. Speakers must present their remarks directly to the school board, not to the audience, and may provide copies of their comments to our school board clerk. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you this evening, there's a time-tracking system displaying on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from me, the chair, when your time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you. Please know, we will not be responding to you directly during this public forum. However, a Henrico team member will follow up with you. Stakeholders have also had the opportunity to provide the board with written comments through an online form in advance of this meeting. Those comments are shared with the board members prior to the meeting and also posted for viewing in board docs. Please know, equal consideration and attention will be given to both written and in-person comments. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and for taking the time to provide input. The first speaker is speaker number one.
I'm the first other one. Members of the board, my name is Marlene Sherlock. I live in the Fairfield District, but our neighborhood is zoned for other districts. And we, my husband and I currently have two students at Tucker High School. Today, I just wanted to briefly make a comment on the upcoming policy on your consent agenda, Policy P-1108001, which is about school visitors and the inclusion of the requirement to show a photo identification. And my request is that you clarify what constitutes a photo ID. Several years ago, when I attempted to visit a high school, I left my wallet in the car, but I had my government employee photo ID on, and they did not want to let me in. And so I just ask that either you do it in the policy itself, or be very clear with the schools that a driver's license is not the only form of acceptable photo ID. That said, my kids said, "Mom, why didn't you just send an email or a text? If your email box is anything like mine, it's overloaded. The same thing with my phone. And so if I take the 45 minutes to drive here and drive home, sign up in advance, you might listen to me just a little bit more closely." And I also wanted to come and thank Ms. Ogborne for your many, many years of service, particularly to the gifted advisory council, that you came to our meetings many, many times. And I can't tell you what it meant to us as parents and teachers and staff to have a member of the board there with us, listening to us. And your tireless support of our Tucker Tigers. We are so proud of our new school. Our principal and faculty and staff and students there are enthusiastic, to say the least. And to Mr. Mosley, and I'm not supposed to address the board. Last night, we had our winter gala at Tucker, at Tucker High School, and tonight's performance from our Longdale Elementary students show that the future of performing arts in Henrico is very, very bright. And I encourage you all to continue to fund that effort at all levels of high school, elementary and middle school as well, because music is the song of our lives. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak with, to us this evening. Are there any other speakers signed up this evening? All right. Well, that concludes our public forum. The next item on the, on our agenda this evening is the approval of consent items. Board members, are there any items that you would like to separate for individual action or discussion?
Chair Kinsella, I just want to take a moment to reflect upon a specific policy as you're going through. I know we're going to do it in a block. Is that something that we are able to do?
Certainly.
Did you want to speak to the specific policy?
I'm trying to pull it.
The one? Okay. No problem. P-11-08-. Give me a second.
Yes.
Chair, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I will chime in. I think Ms. Atkins is referring to the visitor policy that we just heard about, P-11-08-001. Could we pull that out for discussion, please?
That's correct. Am I, am I correct, Ms. Atkins?
That is accurate.
Okay. Thank you. Absolutely. Ms. Ogborne, Ms. Atkins, who would like to lead the discussion?
I'm happy to share some insight related to that. And I'm assuming it's in regard to the feedback received.
Yes, absolutely.
And would note that we can certainly add, if you wanted to approve the policy as it's written, we could add regulation language that specifies very clearly what's meant. And I would want to work with staff and our Raptor visitor ID scanning process to make sure we're clear on which IDs are compatible with that. And then we could add that language and clarity to staff in the regulation associated with the policy.
Is that amenable to board members, or would you like to have it withdrawn?
I think it would be best to have it withdrawn, so that we can have more time to really dive into it a little bit more.
Dr. Cashwell, with that being said, could you please have Chief of Staff bring it to the policy committee at our next meeting?
Certainly. We'll provide a recommendation based on the feedback and provide a draft of that recommendation to you.
Well, and Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I will add to that. I think my gut reaction is if it's in the regulation, oftentimes, parents don't see the regulations as much as they see the policies. I would prefer, I think, now that I'm, this is my last chance to say it, because I won't be on the policy committee anymore, but I would think that clarification within the policy itself that would be very accessible to parents and to visitors would be most prudent. But I agree with Mrs. Kinsella. Let's send it back to the policy committee for consideration and redraft. And if we have.
And then it comes back.
And then it comes back, if we could.
Yeah. We'll provide a, we'll provide a revised recommendation based on the feedback.
It would be, it would, it's item 9.10. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. 9.23. Okay. Or, okay.
Dash 08.
Okay.
We can remove the item number.
So Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll make a new motion.
Please.
Okay. I move that the school board accept, approve, or approve.
Dash 08.
Okay.
We can remove the item number.
So, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll make a new motion.
Please.
Okay, I move that the school board accept, approve, or award items 9.01 through 9.22 and, and items 9.24 through 9.28. And I think that will cover us...
I believe it will.
We're well advised that that will cover us for removing that item.
Thank you so much for the motion. May I have a second, board members?
Second.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Items 9.01 to 9.22 and items 9.24 to items 9.28 on the consent agenda have been approved. The next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of appointments to the Henrico Education Foundation Board of Directors. Is there a motion to approve the appointments to the Henrico Education Foundation Board of Directors?
I move that the school board approve the appointments to the Henrico Education Foundation Board of Directors as presented.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. And now for a vote, now for a vote, actually a roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogborne?
Respectfully, I need to abstain, because I can't vote for myself.
And then I vote aye. The ayes have it. The appointments to the Hef Board of Directors are approved. The reason Mrs. Ogborne abstained from voting for herself is because, congratulations, Mrs. Ogborne, we look forward to continuing to work with you as you become a member of the Board of the Henrico Education Foundation Board of Directors.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is item 11.01, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business, board members? Hearing none? The next item then would be new business, which includes our committee reports that board members provide periodically when their committees meet. And then it looks like I'm the first board member up this evening. Before I start with Student Advisory Committee, I just want to highlight that the Multilingual Advisory Committee met yesterday and given our extensive, comprehensive presentation given to this afternoon's work session. I'm not going to give an update there, but I did want to say that the committee had met. If you'd like to see the work that our multilingual advisory committee is, is helping to achieve, please see the work session presentation from this afternoon's meeting. Our superintendent Student Advisory Committee, that I have the honor of sitting on, met virtually on December 7th, 2023. And one of the great things that we're doing with the students currently is updating our learner, leader, and educator profiles, and getting extensive feedback from the students about what they want, what changes they may want to their learner profile, what types of characteristics mean something to them in their leaders and in their educators. So more to come on that when we next meet in the spring. And then the next committee, the other committee that I had a meeting recently was our Henrico Education Foundation Board. And I see our leader of that organization, Damon Higgins, in our audience. Thank you for coming and joining us this evening. At the last meeting, the board pretty much discussed business that reflected on 2023 and reflected goals for 2024, as well as they highlighted new grant opportunities. The window is now open, and the deadline is February 7th, 2024. I repeat, the deadline for grants from the Henrico Education Foundation, innovative grants, that is, the deadline is February 7th, 2024. And that concludes my updates from my committees. And then the next update will come from Ms. Atkins.
Thank you. So today, I'm going to provide three updates from the School Health Advisory Board around policy advancement, immunization clinics, as well as learning and fresh food options. So around policy advancements, SHAB, in collaboration with HCPS, has successfully finalized policy language pertaining to access to water in schools, along with the promotion of water consumption throughout the day. And that's also located in our HCPS policy manual, P-6-11-004-R. Additionally, in that same initiative, they are going to work on trying to get free resources within our buildings, along with planning a celebratory event centered around water as an essential nutrient. Secondly, around immunization clinics, SHAB continues to help support HCPS in partnering with health departments. Very excited that, starting in February, immunization clinics will be available in middle and high schools. So look forward to announcements, emails, communications, all of that will be disseminated closer to February 2024. And it's also going to be accompanied by consent forms in multiple languages, just to ensure inclusivity. Lastly, around learning and fresh food options, promoting healthy eating habits among students is important. So to this end, the committee is working on a comprehensive resource guide for schools, focusing on how to establish a garden, the importance of fresh foods, the difference between why a fresh food out of a garden tastes different from something that you may get in a can in a store. We're very excited about that. Additionally, there will be advocacy efforts around encouraging fruit and salad bars throughout our schools, especially when we have events, when we're providing snacks, making sure that we provide an apple or banana or something healthy along the way. So those are a few of the updates from our School Health Advisory Board. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Our next update will come from Ms. Ogborne.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a brief update and kind of a shout-out for the Gifted Education Advisory Committee. On November 28th, an unusual and different meeting happened. First of all, there was a tour of the Center for the Arts, which I think everyone enjoyed. But the committee and the committee leaders took a different tact with this meeting, advertised it, and broadcast it out through various sources to open the meeting up to a lot of different folks that haven't normally been to a GAC meeting. And the speaker, had a guest speaker, and that was Dr. Catherine Little. And she's the author of Content-Based Curriculum for Advanced Learners. And the reason why I bring that up is we had over 70 people tune in for this meeting because it was so widespread, you know, to, out to the public, that we were having a special speaker. And it was very meaningful to a lot of people to have information that they otherwise would not have been able to have access to. So I really commend the committee for opening this up to parents of gifted learners, but parents of all children, to, to learn about talent development, no matter how it can happen, every child has talent in them. So I want to commend the committee for that. And I think they're going to begin to use that approach to attract more people to, to different speakers that come from various places, so we can learn even more. So kudos to the team for having a meeting of that. It was virtual and in-person, sorry. But to have over 70 people attend a GAC meeting was, was incredible. And to also tie it to our talented students at the Center for the Arts. So that's my report, but I just, I also am hoping our other committees might learn from that tact of having it virtual and in-person, but also advertising it in the way that they did. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that report, Ms. Ogborne. And then the last item on our agenda this evening is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, January 11th, 2024, at 1:00 p.m. Please note that the meeting time may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.